Shaun, are you ready? Okay. Good evening, we'll call this meeting to order if you'd please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Shaun, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Excused.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Present.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Thank you, alright, we do have one presentation or proclamation tonight and it is not on And this will be awkward, but Shaun, can you come over and join me, please? So you can't be typing, taking notes for the meeting, the minutes while you're up here.
Doug can do it for me.
Doug, very good. So, we received a letter from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And it said, "On behalf of the Board of Directors, it is my pleasure to inform you that you have been awarded the International Institute of Municipal Clerks designation of Master Municipal Clerk. Included in this package is your hard-earned MMC certificate as well as your MMC lapel pin." Do you have your lapel pin on? You left it at your desk? Alright, fine. IIMC grants the MMC designation only to those municipal clerks who complete demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government, their community, and state. It says, "In light of the speed and drastic nature of change these days," right? "Lifelong learning is not only desirable, it is necessary for all in local government to keep pace with growing demands and changing needs of the citizens we serve. We applaud your educational accomplishments and achievement of this milestone and congratulate you on your personal pursuit of professional excellence. Signed, Mary J. Kizer, IIMC President, International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And so from our office, a box of Gosenko's chocolates to say thank you and congratulations." You have this letter, I know, but I will give you that copy as well, and if you would go forward and accept the appreciation of council for the great work that you do, Shaun. Thank you.
Does this mean we have to call you Master Clerk from here on out?
In advance of? Alright, we have no appointments tonight. Do we have any agenda modifications, Shaun?
No, Your Honor.
Alright. We have no public hearings tonight, so we will go to audience participation. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided. I have those who have already signed in, so at the end of this list, if someone else did not get a chance to sign in, you're still able to speak. We just wanted to make sure that people who signed in early are allowed to go in the order that they signed in. And if you would please limit your comments to three minutes, so Shaun is going to start the clock as soon as you begin speaking. Actually, we'll let you give your name and address for the record and then we'll start that, okay? So that we're not taking up time in case you have a long address.
Long names.
And long names. These names don't seem too long tonight, but the addresses could be. Alright, first on the list tonight is Carl Johnson.
Hi, my name's Carl Johnson, I live in southeast Auburn. Okay? I've been a member of this community all in forty-six, forty-seven years. I care about this community. I don't think I would ever do what I'm doing right now, but there's some shenanigans going on in the city that gotta stop. Good examples, four weeks ago, there was a vote to increase the twenty-dollar tab. It was shelved for another hundred and twenty days. Rich, John, and Bob showed up. Bill, you're on a trip. So was Claude. So one of our city ten members had the presence of mind in this great city to call our city attorney and get approval for Claude to call in. Claude, you called in, and I've already thanked you. Thank you for doing your job. I would've expected you to do that, Bill, because this is an important twenty-dollar tab. Very important. Largo, I don't know where the heck you're at, and neither do I, but I would expect you should've been here, something this important. You had no excuses. And it's not the first time this happened. Stop the games. I think your behavior was despicable, unprofessional, unethical, and I think you violated the code of conduct being a city council person. You let us all down. You can't deny it because it's on TV, as I am right now. And I'm shaking because I get no pleasure out of this. I just want us to stop. A twenty-dollar tab almost got passed because we didn't have a quorum. You need four councilpersons per quorum. So Bill's out of town, should've called in. Claude, the contact with Claude, he did call in. That gave us four, and they were able to shelter. What they did is on the Transportation Advisory Committee, made a recommendation, five to zip, to approve this. They presented it to the council a month ago for approval. It would've went into effect, again, if somebody didn't have the presence of mind to talk to Claude and to shelter for another hundred and twenty days. Now, I do give them credit. You made a vote, you realize now it's probably a bad idea, and you're looking at it. And I do appreciate that. But it's gotta stop. You were voted in as city council people to do best with what the citizens of this city. This is a great city, and I want it to knock off. Largo, you didn't even have the presence of mind to vote on the first time. You walked out. I don't know what that's all about. And I've known you for twenty years, and this hurts me to say this, but knock it off, guys. I was trained at the Boeing Company to walk into factories, analyze things, and I can watch you guys. Some of you people don't even have the courtesy to smile at Nancy. So I'm done. I'm sorry. As Forrest Gump said, "I've said enough." Thank you for your time. But I'm gonna keep watching you, and I'm gonna keep pointing it out. And Nancy, thank you for allowing me to do it. And thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next is Eric Cornstrom.
My name's Eric Cornstrom, I live in northeast Auburn. I'm here only to voice opposition to a potential for having a safe injection sites. I went to the deal with the theater a while back, and Nancy, you were there, and I believe you said that you had no interest in that, that was one of the recommendations you were against.
Correct.
I just wanted to get the rest of the council's view on that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Mary Ann Harkness.
My name is Mary Ann Harkness, I live on the West Hill, 2978053rd Avenue South. And I'm here, again, the first time was about the transfer station many years ago. And from that experience, I learned that King County can override a city, and I don't want that to happen again. So I've asked for a resolution to be in opposition of the, what they call the Shell, the Community Health Engagement Locations. We don't need that here in Auburn, and I want it in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nick Wilson.
Hi.
It'll pick up, yeah.
Okay. So basically, last quarter, was it?
Oh, I need your name and address, though.
Oh, my name is Nick Wilson, and I live in Federal Way. So basically, last quarter, I was here talking about Friendship Day and how we're gonna have a city event. We actually have flyers just prior to pass out, and it's a good event, basically, to remind not only our generation now, but even our younger youths about why to be a little considerate one day about the people around us, because we're not all fortunate to live to be our grandpa and grandma. So I think you'd like to say, Sky.
My name's Skylar Nichols, I live in North Auburn, I also go by Skyman, the tri-colored crusader. I am Auburn's real-life superhero, transplanted from Federal Way. I would invite everyone out, August 6th, Town Square Park and Federal Way, to come to our second inaugural International Friendship Day. We are going to have a big hoopla, music, food, all sorts of wonderful entertainment for friendship. We will have a ceremony honoring the concept of friendship. And please, come on out, Town Square Park, August 6th, Federal Way, Washington. Thank you. Skyman salutes.
Thank you very much.
If you guys want a flyer out there, too, I got plenty of others, too.
There will be extras.
The table.
Alright, next on the list is Lynn England.
Good evening, Mayor Backus, Deputy Mayor Wales, and members of the Auburn City Council. My name's Lynn England, and I live on the West Hill of Auburn. Heroin is a scourge. It's the closest thing to the devil I know, and it's the closest thing to the devil I've ever seen. I have a family member who is a recovering addict, and today is faithfully executing his recovery plan. It wasn't always that way. Theft, lying, manipulation, assault, jail time, you name it. It gets bad. Once a person's addicted, it's nearly impossible for them to recover on their own. The drugs put them in a place where their only daily function is to focus on getting more drugs. After a while, they no longer get high, they only use the drugs to keep from getting sick, to keep from going through withdrawal. My addict told me that after he shot up, he felt dirty inside and out, every single time, just completely dirty. Granted, he no longer had the feeling, the effects of withdrawal, which he described as feeling like every bone in your body is breaking at the same time. And then, that's only to be followed up by the worst flu you could ever have, ten times as bad as any flu you could think of. Addiction's a complex disease, those afflicted often suffer mental illness, such as bipolar and schizophrenia. These folks are just trying to feel normal. They're trying to keep, they're trying to stop the extreme highs and lows of being bipolar or make the unwanted voices and apparitions go away. Addiction manifests itself in bad behavior. Coincidentally, so does Alzheimer's, but no one would ever consider ignoring the health needs of an Alzheimer's patient. Safe injection sites will not help the addict. They ignore the real health needs of the addict, who, by the way, are your mothers and sons and daughters and brothers and sisters. Safe injection sites will only enable the addict and kick the can of recovery down the road, thus making treatment that much harder and rendering elusive the real health need of the addict. Oh, boy, I'm running out of time. Suffice to say that we should take the money that we want to put into safe injection sites and put it into recovery and treatment plans, and never give up on the addict. We can never, ever give up on the addict. They're people, they have a soul, they don't want to die, they just want to feel normal. But they have a disease, and they have, they need to have their disease treated. And they have to know that they have to have their disease treated, and kind of hitting rock bottom is one of the ways that happens. So never give up on the addict. Where there's life, there's hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Angela Dab.
I want to recognize the police officer.
Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Angela Dab, 30402 Thomas Road, southeast, 98042, kind of on the border of Kent, Covington, or Auburn, so you can pick whichever one you prefer. But I also wanted to recognize the police officer in the room, because I know you do a really difficult job, and I appreciate you with my whole heart. Now, I came here tonight to speak to the issue of safe injection sites, and the gentleman speaking before me was quite eloquent in what he said, so I'm not gonna reiterate any of that. But I do want to point out, and I want to make really sure that some of the people in King County are listening, because it's counterproductive. I just can't even understand, common sense is defied when you talk about a safe injection site. It's ridiculous. There's no such thing. And the victims that result from the crime, the degradation of the society that we live in, just can't be tolerated. And so if anyone thinks that that is acceptable in our community, you're wrong, and we are paying attention, and if you vote for such ridiculousness, we will vote you out. That's all. So thank you, thank you for serving our community, and thank you all for paying attention to what's going on here and for being here. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next is Carol Smith.
Hi, I'm Carol Smith, and I own a home in southeast Auburn, 22nd Street, southeast Auburn. And, gosh, where do I begin? Three minutes is gonna be enough. We've had some definite issues in that area, especially next door to my home, and some have been addressed, some not. We do not have police response there as much as we would like, or drive-bys as much as we would like, and I know you have a lot to deal with. But the whole thing is, is zoning issues are being broken, the dogs lose no license, no anything, and there's a lot of suspicious behavior. And now, it's kind of a safety issue. My daughter's living in the home, we're getting it ready to sell, it was my folks' place, and now I'm kind of getting a little scared for her safety of what went on there this Saturday. And now we had water being stole from our faucets because of the neighbors next door. We called it in, nobody came out, they just told us to go get locks for our spigots of the phone. So I mean, is that a solution? I mean, you know, I'm just saying, there's just a lot of stuff going on, it gets complicated, I know. There's a lot to deal with, Auburn's a pretty good-sized city, but it just doesn't seem like they've been supposedly surveilling that house next door for five, six years. Isn't there enough evidence to close whatever's happening down in there? I mean, there ought to be something. We've even called in as neighbors and everything, given them license numbers, given them information, and to no avail. I just don't know what the answer is, or if there is an answer, if we're gonna get any answers, is this gonna just continue? I know with certain things, you have to wait till you get the big guy, but do all the neighbors have to put up with this kind of behavior until you do? It's an unsafe environment, and plus, there's a garbage issue? Oh, it's disgusting. There is just garbage everywhere. The garbage, the waste management did come out and have them pick up the easement between the houses, which is, by the way, supposed to be clear at all times, which they've broken that zoning law, too, to get in the backyards of the both houses. I've had to rap on the door to get workmen to come in and work, because there's cars parked there, I mean, it's everything, one after another. I just don't know what to do anymore. Who do I talk to to get something? Sanitation, the Health Department, where do I go?
So for the issues that are police-related, I'm going to ask Commander Stalker to talk with you once you're finished with your time up here, and we will get someone for garbage collection, solid waste, to contact you as well.
It could be a rat haven by now. If it isn't, it's gonna be.
Well, and code enforcement can be included in that as well. So Commander Stalker, if you would please talk with Ms. Smith, and I've got your address here, if you'll provide your phone number as well to Commander Stalker.
I can do that.
And he can share that with me, then we'll make sure that you get a call back on those items.
Okay, I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Last on the sign-in list is Annette Hines.
Mine is basically just a continuation, ma'am.
Your name and address.
My name is Annette Hines, and I'm at 1310 22nd Street, southeast Auburn, Washington. And mine is, I'm 1310, she's 1320, I used to take care of her parents, and caretaker for them. And then, it's all zoning, it's like leash law, litter law, and leash loitering and litter.
The three Ls.
So these are all city ordinances that should be enforced, and that's what we're having problems with getting taken care of and enforced, and to get the response for that to be taken care of. And then at 1510, right down the street, we had sheriff, we had DEA, we had, oh, we just had the response that you wouldn't believe, and seven and a half hours of evidence came out of that house. And, you know, and as neighbors, that's concerning. We have a little Chicago right here on 22nd Street in Auburn, and we have no idea what's going on just on one street in Auburn. And so therefore, you know, I have grandchildren, we have little kids, you know, you just gotta keep them in your house or, you know, locked up in the backyard, you know? It is very concerning as a, you know, citizen. I've been here fifty-six years, grew up here, raised my kids, now I've got grandkids I'm raising here, you know, my second set of grandkids, you know? So I've got, you know, grandkids in college that, you know, I'm very proud of this city. And then, you know, beautiful streets were laid, and sidewalks were laid, and, you know, to have it treated with disdain is, you know, I really have to tell you, is, you know, very, you know, I've called in the homeless coming down the street and dumping their stuff in our, I've called it all in, and, you know, getting no response. So it is very, you know, when you can't get, you know...
Have you been calling police, or are you calling 911, or the non-emergency?
I've been calling 911, non-emergency response, you know? Because, you know, it's, you know, it's pretty much all done, and, you know, there's no proof by the time they, you know, do show up and things like that. But, you know, I do know it's being, you know, dumped and...
And are you asking for contact when you call in?
Oh, yes, and I have typed in where you want drive-bys, and you have to do that every two weeks, you know? I know the routine, I do, swear, I've been doing it for seven years. So I do know the routine, you know? So, yeah. You know, and I'm all for doing whatever routine needs to be done.
Sure.
You know, so you can't really say the word, but I can get them on the leash law, you know, the loitering law, and the littering law. And so, you know, and really, when the dog has been, you know, the leash law has been broken for seven years, it's amazing to me that the dog hasn't been taken. I don't know why that dog is still in our neighborhood, he was loose today again. So I appreciate your time, but...
So if, I believe Commander Stalker is out talking with your neighbor...
He's talking with my good friend, yeah.
If you would like to join in on that conversation...
Yeah, I would, mind, yeah, yeah.
Get some information from Commander Stalker, and he'll get your information, and we'll do a follow-up on that.
Right, because my daughter was here a couple months ago with the same officer.
Okay.
So, you know, we'll continue, but I'm all for continuing.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hines. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record. Nice to see you again.
Thank you. Mary Miller, I live at 1802 I Street Northeast in Auburn. I've been listening to the comments about dogs. Unfortunately, I can't help it. Unfortunately, it is an issue for a lot of people, and there does need to be more education. But I also know that a place, Valley Cities, where I go, they're requiring for their dogs to be canine-certified as a good citizen. They have to pass a test before they can, you know, so I mean, some of the issues are being addressed, but we do have a lot of issues because people do not train their dogs. In the beginning, when I first moved to Auburn, Lady escaped every once in a while, so I do understand that as well, but that's still no excuse for our behavior as dog owners. And so I'm not sure what we can do to educate them more, but it is a problem. And it's also making it more difficult in some places for people that are calling their dogs service dogs, for us to take our animals in that are service dogs, that are behaved. I've actually had to cancel a few doctor's appointments because of the fact that they don't allow them in because of previous dog's behaviors. So I'm not sure how to address the problem, but there are people that are working on it. So it's not all the dogs are being, it's like, so anyway, but there are places that are trying to address the issues, so I just wanted to speak on behalf of the dogs.
And so I know Lady is a very well-behaved dog.
Thank you. But anyway, but we do, you know, they do escape, but if it's something that's happening all the time, then it's, they're either digging out of the fence, or they're just not, you know, regardless, we as owners are responsible for whatever our, it's like our kids. If our kid gets in trouble with the neighbors, you're responsible. So I do ask that pet owners do be more responsible, but I'm not sure how we can educate all the pet owners.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mary. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Rivera, and my address is 123 C Street Northwest. I would like to start off by citing an excerpt from an official United Nations report written by the Secretary-General titled "Culture of Peace." "We will not be successful unless we can harness the idealism, creativity, and energy of young people and others who feel disenfranchised. Young people who constitute the majority of the population of an increasing number of countries today must be viewed as an asset and must be empowered to make a constructive contribution to the political and economic development of their societies and nations. They represent an untapped resource. We must offer them a positive vision of the future together with a genuine chance to realize their aspirations and potential. I would also like to bring attention to the violations of human rights happening within original reservation boundaries of the P'Alap tribe. PSE, an Australian corporation, is currently laying a five-mile, sixteen-inch pipeline intended to supply fracked gas to PSE's proposed massive liquefied natural gas plant at the Port of Tacoma. The P'Alap tribe opposes the proposed facility because it violates the rights to fish, their treaty rights to fish, and puts their community, land, air, and water at grave risk. Twenty-seven other Washington tribes have also voted to oppose PSE's liquefied natural gas plant. It is very clear that the city of Auburn has no intentions to stand by the indigenous people of this land, let alone the youth. Now, before you think to yourself, 'Well, that's happening in Tacoma, not here,' I want to remind you that you live on land that was sold to you by someone who had no rights to sell it in the first place. When someone says they care about you, I expect that they mean it. The city of Auburn does not care about the Muckleshoot tribe, only the money and the tourism they attract. The city of Auburn does not care about me. Not once since January 6th, 2016, have any of you, including the mayor, asked me if I feel okay, if I'm fine." asked me if I feel okay, if I'm fine, how am I doing? The only topics we talk about is topics that put your job at risk. I have been a victim of racial violence, discrimination and censorship. Just this weekend, we had our house broken into and the criminals made away with many personal effects. This has never happened to me until recently. Inaction many times is more damaging than direct action to the development of a society. I'm not here anymore to convince you to care about the injustices happening of the indigenous people of this land. I care about them. I'm not here anymore to convince you to care about the working class and their struggles. I care about them. I'm not here to convince you to care about me anymore. I care about me. I'm here to put you on notice. Your days are numbered. No longer will the residents of Auburn be victims to the, of the culture of inaction that has plagued our city government for as long as anyone can remember. No longer will the residents of Auburn fall victim to the group of people who have.
Your time is up.
To feel, that feel entitled to make the decision of who can and cannot represent them.
Your time is up.
Everyone else may be too scared to stand up to you, but I am not.
Time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time today.
Sorry, didn't mean to wake you up like that. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Last time. All right, we will close. Oh, I'm sorry, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Ronnie Roberts, one-one-six Auburn. First of all, I don't approve of that in the sense of, I do believe that Auburn cares about the Muckleshoot tribe and we have a great relationship with them. And I find that very disturbing. Second of all, there isn't bad dogs, there's just bad owners, frankly. Third is, as you all know, all but one of you called me back about twenty-dollar car tabs. Still not happy about that, Largo. I think it's a fair thing and a great thing for Auburn. I think it's money that can go for fixing our roads. I truly believe that. I think it doesn't stick it on the back of businesses. I think it sticks it on to people that drive in Auburn where it should be. If you can't afford the dollar sixty a month, maybe you shouldn't drive. That's my opinion on that. Let's see, second of all, I'm not sure about what's going on about injection sites, but I'm pretty sure that we've taken a stance on that, that that's not what we're for here in Auburn. So I don't know why we're still discussing it. But I don't, I'm not always up on everything either. But overall, I appreciate each and every one of you. I believe that deep down, you guys have the heart of the city and the people that live here. And I hope that you guys can pull it together and start working as a team. Because frankly, you were hired as a team, you get paid to be a team, and you guys are not doing a very good job of it. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Shaun, do we do second time around? Are we, do we allow people to speak more than once? I just want to make sure for the. There's not a rule against it. Okay, please come forward. You just need to give your name and address again for the record.
I did forget a very important point. Angela Dab, three zero four zero two Thomas Road, Southeast, nine eight zero four two. I would just like to, if you all would be willing to state, I'm one that likes to hear it from the horse's mouth. I don't, I mean, I read newspapers and I pay attention, but I would like to hear it from all of you, your position on the safe injection sites. Would you mind to go on the record with this?
So during public comment period, it's not a conversation back and forth, but there will be time later on on the agenda.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
All right, final time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to, we have no correspondence this evening, is that correct, Shaun? All right, we will move to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendations to the city council, if any. And we have the claims and payroll vouchers for finance. Councilmember Baggett is the chair, councilmember Wagner is the other member of that committee, and councilmember Wagner will be giving the report this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. We reviewed the vouchers and payroll. Vouchers in the amount of five million, six hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. And payroll in the total amount of two million, two oh six, six thirty-seven, seventy-eight. And we approve or recommend that the council approve payroll and vouchers.
Thank you. Annual selection of deputy mayor, councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee will reconvene again next Monday at four o'clock prior to our study session, after the conversation we had at our last study session. So we will be reporting back next week's study session and we're anticipating we would ask for a vote on August seventh on the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Twenty-dollar tab fee, full spectrum of issues regarding the twenty-dollar card tab fee. I sure hope we never have to put that on a card or anything. Deputy Mayor Wells.
We're going to have our next meeting on August seventh. We've skipped a week because we wanted to make sure the whole council was, or the full ad hoc committee was there. And councilmember Baggett's on vacation.
Okay, thank you.
Could you get your microphone up? It's hard to hear.
You couldn't hear me?
I didn't notice I didn't have it on.
It's on.
I think it was just over to the side. Okay. Consent agenda, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wells.
On the consent agenda this evening, we have the minutes from the July twenty-seventeen regular city council meeting, the minutes of the city council's study sessions, May eleventh, June eighth, June twenty-ninth and September fourteenth from twenty-fifteen. We also have on the agenda this evening the claims vouchers and payroll vouchers, which councilmember Wagner reviewed and spoke to. Further, we have Public Works Project CP one-seven-one-four, which talks about and addresses sidewalk and ADA repairs to our sidewalks. Item F, we have the final payment for the smoke repair on the fireplace that's out at the golf course in the entranceway. And finally, we have Public Works, we're awarding a contract to deal with the Lee Hill Pressure-Reducing Valve Station project, which we reviewed at our last study session in quite detail.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Pelosi.
Mayor, I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to pull for discussion items B, F and G.
B, the council study session minutes?
Yes.
And what were the other ones?
F.
F and G.
And G.
Boy, Frank, George.
Okay. All right, I don't need a second for that. They're just pulled for separate consideration. All those in favor of the consent agenda items A, C, D and E, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right, we will move back to item B, minutes of the city council study sessions, May eleven, June eighth, June twenty-nine and September fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. Do we need a new motion, Shaun? Yes, okay. Do we have a motion to accept? Councilmember Holman.
Move to accept minutes of city council study session.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman, did you want to say anything about? Okay, all right, is there a discussion? Councilmember Pelosi.
My concern is, these are minutes from June, May, nineteen twenty-fifteen, over two years ago. I don't understand why we have not had these minutes come before us before now. Why has it taken two years?
Shaun, would you like to respond?
So as we spoke on the phone earlier today, the clerk's office has various duties that are very time-sensitive, including your council agenda's minutes with action, public records, those types of things. These minutes do not have any action, and so unfortunately, they are something that has been put off to the side. We are working diligently, as you can see, we have, I believe, two last time and four this time, trying to get them caught up, but we are definitely behind.
Okay.
So how can we fix that? I think, I think that minutes should be timely. I mean, we have boards and commissions within the city of Auburn, like about fourteen or so. And we expect those minutes to come out timely. So I really don't understand why these are not timely.
Well, I think you just heard our city clerk explain that sometimes there are other items that take a priority, such as council minutes that have action items attached to them, and they are working in their office to ensure that we get up to date on the study session minutes. Correct?
Oh, I.
Yes, Your Honor.
I can understand backlogs and stuff like that, and I can appreciate that. But somehow, we have to correct the system.
And councilmember Pelosi, they are working on that.
So can we have a report back so that we know that this is being, putting a priority on the minutes?
So we will work on providing you with the schedule of when the minutes will be updated, right?
I, I would like to know, I would also like to know, Mayor, how many meetings are still aged where we have not provided minutes?
So currently, what I am doing is I am coming in on Saturdays and working on this. And I am starting at the furthest back meeting and I am working forward. If council would prefer, I can start at the last study session and work backwards. But we were trying to get things to current.
I, Mayor, I think that we, I'd like to see a list of the backlog.
We will provide you with a list.
I can certainly provide you that list.
Okay, thank you, that's all, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes of the city council's study sessions, May eleven, June eighth, June twenty-nine and September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. Item F, facilities contract number seventeen dash sixteen, do I have a motion? There is no motion. Councilmember Wagner.
I move for the approval of facilities contract seventeen sixteen.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagner, did you want to say anything to this?
Well, I'm kind of surprised.
Your microphone, please.
I am kind of surprised that this has happened, and I think we need to work on some operating procedures or whatever so it doesn't happen again. That's a pretty big bill for not using the fireplace appropriately.
Dana, do you have any, any info as to, over facilities on this one?
Yeah, it was discovered that the logs inside the fireplace had been moved. We're not sure how or why our facilities have locked it down. So the logs and informed staff that that shouldn't happen. And it was all covered by insurance, so it's not coming out of our pocket essentially. But the, the reason for the issue has been resolved, and it's my understanding that soot removal is expensive. So ideally, this won't happen again.
Councilmember Pelosi.
My, my only question in this was, who is our insurance company that picked up the cost?
I don't know. I'm not sure who our insurance, that would be a question for HR.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get that information for you. Any other questions? Unless Doug, do you know?
Excuse me, I believe it's the risk pool, the Washington Association.
WCIA?
Yeah, WCIA.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of item F, facilities contract number seventeen dash sixteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. Item G, Public Works Project number CP sixteen seventeen, is there a motion? Councilmember Wagner.
I move for the approval of Public Works Project CP one-six, one-seven.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagner.
Well, these are the equipment, as far as our water system, we have pressure-reducing valves all over the place because we have water up on the hills, we have water down in the valleys. And so they have a service life of thirty years or so, and these are worn out, so we need to do it.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Pelosi.
I was, I was up on Lee Hill last week, maybe two weeks ago. And I was on the same road, Lee Hill Road. And there was a large amount of water coming down and into a storm drain. And there was algae all up and down, like it's been running a long time. So I took a photo of it, I sent it into your gov. And I went up, and that goes into maintenance and operations. And so I went up in that area about three days later, and it was dry. So, and I'm wondering if this is part of this, of this CP sixteen seventeen.
I'm getting a nod from our city engineer, Ingrid, that it is not part of that.
Yeah, so what you would have seen is storm drainage, most likely, over the hillside. And this is for our potable water system, so the two don't intermix.
Storm, that's hard to believe. Storm drainage?
Mm-hmm, well, and if you, if you saw algae there, then it would not be out of our portable, our potable water system.
So how did it stop so quickly?
I don't know, I don't have the details on that particular request to know what maintenance operations.
M and O, M and O must have sent a team out to stop it.
They, they could have. Unfortunately, we get hundreds of requests a day, and I don't know all the details on all of them, so I can't answer that specific question.
All I was trying to ascertain was if this was part of the, of the reducing valve stations project.
And it's not.
And my other question was, for seventy-four thousand dollars, what did this consultant do?
So the consultant does the actual design of the stations and of the water system for us, puts all the bid plans together, all the specifications together, so, and then they also assist us through construction if we request it.
Why would a consultant, weren't these already operating?
So anytime that we're replacing a station, we also look at what we need to do to improve that station. So some of these locations, we are actually making configuration changes so that they will operate more efficiently.
Is that what happened to these? To make them more efficient?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of Public Works Project number CP sixteen seventeen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business. Do we have new business? Councilmember Holman.
Yes, Mayor, under new business, an item of new and urgent business, I move that council consider and adopt Resolution number five-three-zero-six as an additional item B. I move that council consider and adopt Resolution Number 5306 as an additional item B under Roman numeral eleven, Resolutions, and the short title is opposing the citing of illegal substance injection facilities within Auburn City limits. I'll speak to it if I have a second.
So, Mr. City Attorney, just because we don't often have new business, I just want to make sure that, that we are conducting this properly. So, there is a Resolution Number 5306 that was handed out. Can you speak to that, and then we have council members that have questions?
Speak to the process?
Yes.
Yeah. I think you can either entertain the motion as a new business item and take it up at, under Number Nine, or you could make a motion to add it on to the resolution section and take it up there. I'm not sure it matters, really.
Councilmember Holman, did you have?
I, my motion was that it be under Roman numeral eleven, Resolutions. And then, quite honestly, I'll, I'll speak to the resolution at that time. I think that'd be more efficient and more logical.
Okay.
Just an introduction of a, a resolution.
Okay. And Mr. City Attorney, does that require a second to add that to the agenda?
I'm gonna say to be, I'm gonna say to be safe, yes.
All right. Do we have a second? Councilmember Wagner.
I second the motion, Your Honor.
All right. And so, do we have to have discussion, or is it just a motion and a second?
Just a motion and a second.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance, ordinance 6657. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, amending Section 1852-050 of the Auburn City Code relating to the procedures utilized for considering modification of the commercial driveway throat depth standard.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Wagner.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 6657.
Ordinance.
Your ordinance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Pelosi.
I'll second, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagner.
Well, this is a, a engineering standard that, that needs to be adjusted. It has been on the books for a long time, and it's really causing a lot of problems with, with developing infill lots, those lots that are fairly small but are big enough for a project. And this, this ordinance will make it more sensible.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I'm, we had an opportunity last week to, to look at this issue, and it requires us to modify it by, I think, five feet. Yeah, and as, and I brought up at the time, you know, we look at Starbucks, and they seem to be doing, and Starbucks is one of my favorite, but they seem to have a throat, a commercial throat, that in many cases appears to be only five or 10 feet. And in sharing this with some of my neighboring cities, or our neighboring cities, some of them only have a five-foot throat. So, I'd like to spend some more time, if we're gonna really make a change, is going from 40 to 35 really significant? How much of a break are we really providing, and should we be looking at it being maybe 20? So, I, I'd like some more information, if possible.
Jeff.
Sure. For the record, Jeff Tate, Assistant Director of Community Development. So, what the proposed ordinance does is it does not change the 40-foot standard. What it does do is that it enables an administrative review of reducing that standard where appropriate. So, it doesn't change the number at all.
Okay.
Just want to be real clear about that. It changes the process for review. Currently, it has to go to the hearing examiners at variance. It's a $500 permit. It's about a three-to-four-month delay in permit processing for a commercial development. So, to be clear, we're, what we've proposed is a modification to the consideration of reducing the standard. We can, as staff, go back and look at the number. That, that could be an okay exercise to go through. I do want to point out that it is a land use standard, so since it's, what's before you is an administrative provision, if, if, if there's direction to look at the number, the 40 feet versus five feet or whatever, that is an item that has to go to Planning Commission because it's a development standard.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagner.
I should, Jeff, I should have asked this during the study session, but has the Valley Regional Fire Authority weighed in on what they think is appropriate throat depth?
No, but really, on throat depth, it's not a standard that fire exercises a lot of influence or, or input in, on anyway. I mean, typically, theirs is about access to the building and distance that they can get apparatus to the building. So, the throat depth is, it could be a function within that overall design, but fire is typically not consulted in terms of the parking lot layout and what that commercial throat depth is. They're looking more at proximity to the building.
May I follow up, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Well, this might be another reason to send it back and see if we can come up with a lower absolute number, so that there's less review through engineering to, to have something work, and get some input from the Valley Regional Fire Authority, because if they've got to pull their truck into a particular place to work, I bet they care how much distance they have to do that. So, I, I would like to see it go back, and I would like to withdraw my motion and instead move that this be returned to the study session for consideration.
So, so that, let me just, let's just clarify. The motion is, is one that could currently expedite the process. That would be of benefit to someone who's coming in currently. The process of sending it back because it's land use means that it has to go to the Planning Commission, and so, in the meantime, that would be holding up an expedited process. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if it goes to the Planning Commission, which is, I mean, that's a, that's the right process for reconsidering a development standard. But that's a, you know, that's a process that, you know, goes through sixty-day state agency reviews, SEPA environmental review under state law, Planning Commission meetings, public hearing. So, we have to go through process. It's something that wouldn't return to council till probably 2018, you know, to get through all of that process. And that could be perfectly appropriate. That's the work the Planning Commission is charged with. I just do want to remind that, that what the draft ordinance does right now is it doesn't touch the standard. It touches the ability to reconsider the appropriateness of that standard on different sites. So, it's, it's granting an administrative provision that adds expediency to considering an alternative. So, perhaps that's not the final solution, but, I mean, from a staff perspective, I think it's still an appropriate provision to have in the code, even if we choose to look at the standard itself.
Councilmember Wagner and Deputy Mayor Wells.
Well, after hearing your discussion, I think this is a two-step project.
Yes.
Process, one is to get the thing more expedited by passing this resolution tonight, your ordinance, and then counting on you to come back in 2018 to have the questions answered that I suggested in my alter motion. So, now, parliamentarily, what do we need to do?
Well, did he make an official motion to, to pull? It wasn't seconded, so, so disregard, Councilmember Wagner.
But we'll look into it.
But we, yeah. Deputy Mayor Wells.
Thank you. Some more clarification. So, if we allow the, the five feet to be at the discretion of the engineer, that, so we could change that to 10 feet, or we could change it to?
In response to a Planning Commission recommendation first.
So, this went through Planning Commission?
No. Right now, we're not changing the number.
Okay, we're just saying that our city, professional city engineer has the authority within that range of five feet to make a professional judgment.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, I, yes, but I would clarify that slightly.
Please.
The city engi, what this does is it doesn't box the city engineer to any number. So, 40 feet is what the standard is. So, it could be reduced to 30, it could be reduced to 10. It just depends upon the, the conditions of that site. The use that is proposed, the depth of the site. There's lots of factors that the city engineer would have taken into consideration.
Deputy Mayor Wells.
I, I support that because I feel that the quality of the engineers that we have in our department, and allowing them to make some of those judgment calls will make everyone's life a lot easier. Thanks for saying that. Thank you.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, these sketches on page 49 and 50, 49 of 84 and 50 of 84, and all the numbers, the minimums to all the dimensions, would it, would it best be clarified by noting what you're trying to do into these dimensions? Or is that an overkill? Or is that assuming something?
Well, this is always a hard, hard to convey when changing code, because what we tend to do is we provide a whole section. So, that section that you're referring to is existing language that refers to the parking stall and aisle dimension standards, which we haven't proposed to modify. That's existing code. We're really just focusing on what's on page 49 under Section Two. So, I, that's always a good question about what the scope of the code change is. So, I appreciate you asking that, but it's really that that's, that's additional language that's in that section of code that it's appearing, because we provide the whole section so you see full context of what that code change looks like.
I was looking at simplification.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not gonna happen in code.
Well, this process does simplify, so.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to make a statement related to allowing our city engineer, engineering staff to have that flexibility, to be able to make certain decisions that, you know, kind of use the word red tape that cuts the red tape, and it helps process become more streamlined and more efficient. And I think using the terms under Section Two on page 49, where it says, "An increase or decrease as determined by criteria set forth in the engineering standards designed", it's going to give the city engineer that flexibility. I do think that, yes, we can and should go back and review a number of the different things that were discussed tonight, especially, especially related to perhaps the Valley Regional Fire Authority, and get their input as well. But I think this is the beginning of the process where we can have a series of conversations that will get us to our desired results toward the end of the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman. Your microphone, please.
I just wanted to ask a question on the $500 permit. Is that a, a regular price for people that are looking to do the project like this? Or is there an, an additional fee for them to do some work on their, on their driveways?
So, a, fees itemize out. So, it depends upon the scope of your work, and we want to make sure that no one's paying too much or too little based upon what the request is. So, keep in mind, this is for commercial driveways only, not residential. And really, what it's doing is it's eliminating that fee, because if the city engineer can, can consider it through a deviation, it's free.
Yeah.
It's part of, embedded in the other review fees. Right now, the way that it's written, we send them on, if the path is straight, we send them on a variance, detour, byway, something like that, and it merges back later on. That's a big timeout for people. The, the $500 variance fee is not an unusual amount to pay for a variance. It goes to the hearing examiner. We have to compensate for the hearing examiner's time as well that we, you know, employ. Is it through contract, third party?
Can I do a follow-up?
Sure.
And also, you mentioned about that there's a timeframe between five to six months.
Three to four.
Oh, I, I, okay.
I wrote three to four.
Okay. Anyway, is it three to four months for, for them to get their permit?
I would say it's a minimum of three months to get through a variance, because, and that assumes a perfect submittal that we can just write our staff report to the hearing examiner, schedule for a public hearing. The hearing examiner holds the hearing. The hearing examiner has 10 days more to issue the decision. So, there's a whole bunch of steps. Three months is the minimum. If the application comes in and we have questions, or they haven't addressed all the items, we have to send a letter, and they have to resubmit with additional information, so it can take more, longer.
Okay, thank you very much.
And this is just one of many items that will be coming forward, as Jeff and Ingrid and I have discussed, on what are some of the issues that can cause holdups that we can streamline moving forward for businesses, developers, homeowners. So, this is just one of many that you will be having discussion on and being brought forward then for a council consideration. All right, any other questions? Hearing now, all those in favor of ordinance number 6657, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. Thank you, Jeff. Resolutions. Mr. City Attorney.
Resolution 5305, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, adopting the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan for the Consolidated Plan Years 2015 through 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I move for the approval of Resolution 5305.
Thank you. Second, Councilmember Pelosi.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Wells.
We had a nice presentation from Director Henman and her staff, and we had a number of people from the Human Services Commission here last week, and we were given an overview and shared some of our thoughts, and I think we're doing some great planning for the future.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Troutman.
I just have a, a comment. Thank you for bringing up all these issues that are so dear to our city, and looking forward to seeing you on Thursday and working on you on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing now, all those in favor of Resolution Number, oh, sorry, Councilmember Pelosi.
I'd like to refer everybody to Exhibit A.
Your microphone?
Thank you. Refer you to Exhibit A, the executive summary, page one.
What page of the?
Oh, 58, 58 of 84. And I'm looking at the fourth paragraph down. "Dealing with $280,000 will be allocated to residential rehabilitation economic development projects." Residential rehabilitation, would that be like for seniors fixing a roof or a house project?
Director Henman.
Yes, that is our housing repair program.
And then, economic development projects?
That would be our facade improvement program.
Oh, done on main?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have also page 67 of 84. That's a matrix anticipated resources. There's a column that's way off to the right. Expected amount available remainder of the con, consolidated plan, is that what that is?
Mm-hmm.
There's, for the CD, for the community development block grants, you've got $1,500,000 in that column, and for the general fund, you have $2 million. Where the, how do those numbers, what's the arithmetic on those numbers?
I would have to refer that to staff, Erica, if you could come up and, yeah.
Is there anything, it's just on, right? Okay. That's actually just an estimate based on how much we've received each year, and each year, it's been about the $500,000 mark, and so, that's why that amount is there.
So, for the remainder of the plan, of the, of the plan, it's a 2015 through 2019 plan, so if you take four more years of the $500,000, that would get you to the $2 million bill.
Correct, yeah.
Is there some way to explain that in, in, on this paper?
I'm sure I can. They don't ask for it. The software's an online program, and all the questions are pre-populated. There is a, a brief area where we can do descriptions, and I can put that in there if you'd like in the future. Okay.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
Erica, this is a standard HUD form naturally, so-
Correct.
You follow the HUD protocol for filling out these forms.
Yes, I do.
But this is an annual action plan, so there's typically a, an annual report as well, I would imagine.
Correct.
And in that report, isn't that when you update these numbers?
Yep, absolutely.
So, I, I just think, I know we- So, I, I just think, I know we probably get it, but just to let all the council members know that we will get a annual report update that does show these numbers in the actual configuration, they would be in at that time.
Correct. It'll be March of next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Councilmember Pelosi?
Page seventy-five. Project name. No longer GRC.
That's correct, it's GRC, just a little typo. Okay.
Go ahead, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of resolution number fifty-three-zero-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number five-three-zero-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, opposing the citing of illegal substance injection facilities within Auburn city limits.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
I move for the adoption of resolution number five-three-zero-six.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
Mayor, I would gladly second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
This is a resolution that I brought forward as new and urgent business today. We heard the, our citizens with passion speaking to this issue, and the, the interwebs have lit up like Christmas trees with the way our citizens feel about this particular issue, and this is one way that we let our citizens know we're listening to them and that we hear them very clearly. And before us all is the language that originated with an email from Citizen Mary Ann Harkness that spoke today, and this has been through three or four iterations with the legal department, so we have legal's blessing on it. And I speak very passionately about passing this so that there is no doubt in anyone's mind our opposition to legalized injection sites, by whatever name they call it, in the City of Auburn.
So, if I might ask, I believe there have been two versions of this, fifty-three-zero-six, the original one that legal provided, and the copy that Ms. Harkness provided this evening, there are two verbiage changes, slight changes to that one. If I might, under page two of three, section one, distribution, in the copy that Ms. Harkness provided, it says the mayor is hereby directed to disseminate this resolution to King County Council and other relevant representatives of federal, state, and local governments as appropriate. And then, also under section two, implementation, the mayor is hereby authorized to implement such administrative and legal procedures as may be necessary to carry out the directions of this legislation. Councilmember Holman, which resolution number five-three-zero-six were you?
Which one does legal advise us to proceed with? I have two copies, one of each in my hand. Which is the most current iteration?
Well, the more, most current iteration that I have does not have the additions that the mayor spoke about. However, I don't think that either is legally objectionable.
Okay. Then I propose that the copy that we have before us, colleagues, is the one that we go forward with, and that would be the one that you read from.
That includes the additional?
Yeah, it would say, "Section one, distribution, the mayor is hereby directed to disseminate this resolution to the King County Council and other relevant representatives of federal, state, and local governments as appropriate."
Okay. That's the copy that council has, is that correct? All right, Deputy Mayor Wells.
I, I think that if we want to make this as strong as possible, the Seattle-King County Board of Health works outside of the King County Council, and they could be referred to as other relevant representatives of federal, state, and local governments. But I think that we should add in there not only the King County Council, the Seattle-King County Public Health Department, because they have the authority to act on their own. And then, there is no question.
Mr. City Attorney, does that need to be in the form of a motion?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, are you making a motion?
That's correct.
Do you want me to restate it?
I think you, you stated it fine, I just wanted to make sure that that was a motion. Do we have a, an amendment to the motion? Do we have a second? Councilmember Troutman.
And I second that.
Okay.
Can, can that be restated for the clerk's convenience?
Okay.
I move that we add, following resolution to King County Council, comma, Seattle-King County Public Health, followed by, and other relative representatives of federal, state, and local governments as appropriate.
Councilmember Wagner, so, just to make sure, are we having, if we start doing comments, is it to the current motion on the floor of the amendment?
That's correct.
All right. Councilmember Wagner, is your comment to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
I would propose that the amendment also include Pierce County, because there are 10 percent of our citizens live in Pierce County, and they need to know about it, too. I like the, having this distribution paragraph, I think we ought to do it more often.
Okay.
And just the discussion shows you how important it can be.
A plate of order, then, would the motion maker be willing to amend her motion?
Yes, can I state it, or would you prefer that there be some other rule?
Is it, is it okay, as a friendly amendment, to include King County and Pierce County?
So, it would read, "Resolution to King and Pierce County Councils, comma, Pierce and Seattle-King County Public Health Departments and Other Relative Representatives," so on and so forth.
Okay. Pierce County isn't taking up this issue, but that's, I don't think so.
They might.
But they could, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, are there any other comments to the amendment to the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment to the motion to include Pierce County Council and King and Pierce Public Health, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. All right, now we have the, we have the resolution in front of us. Are there comments to that? Councilmember Wagner.
Well, again, in this distribution paragraph that I'm intending to like a lot, I think we should consider saying something about the press. I think that we need to let our citizens know what's going on, and maybe that comes under your, section two of implementation, that could be an administrative procedure. But, in fact, I'd be satisfied with that if you just hear what I'm saying is administrative procedure.
Fine. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Troutman.
I just want to make a comment that I am so happy to see this come in front of us. I've been hearing a lot about it since day one that it came out, and people have been asking me if our city was for this, and I know that I, you know, told the people I've been talking about that I was not for this, I would not welcome it in our city, and so I'm so glad that this has come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey.
I would just like to say that we heard this evening, and we've heard many, many times before, where the issue that we're facing is a, is a health crisis issue, it is a disease issue. Councilmember Holman, in all of his years of law enforcement, has said to me and others many, many times that, you know, we need to decriminalize the, the process of drug abuse and, and treat it as a disease, which we should all look at. And I think it's important for us, not only are we going to distribute this to various representatives across our state, county, region, and country, I think it's very important that we raise the banner higher when we go to Olympia and talk to our state representatives. I think it's time for them to really understand that number of things. One is, our mental health system support in this state is broken, it is beyond repair, there's not enough resources being placed in it to fix the problem. We have a situation where many of these issues are placed on the back burner, and I think it's time for our state representatives to step up. And regardless of where we are in the budget, regardless of where we are with the new passage of supporting and funding the clearry for schools, they need to put more dollars into this so we can treat the disease and not treat the criminal activity.
Councilmember DeCoursey, I am going to make my soapbox bigger so you can stand on it with me.
Gladly.
Because that is, that is what I have been talking about for quite some time, about the need for additional resources for behavioral health, the heroin and opioid task force that Executive Constantine, Seattle Mayor Murray, Renton Mayor Law, and myself convened, and Commander Stalker was a member of, came up with the eight recommendations. That included the CHELS, or the Community Health Engagement Locations. I am proud to say that of those task force members, the City of Auburn and the City of Renton voted no on the recommendation for those CHELS sites. Auburn has been on the record for quite some time as being against those, and so tonight, if this passes, it will be official that the voice has been heard and that there will not be any allowance or acceptance of a CHL or a safe injection site, or whatever you want to call them, in the City of Auburn. Is there any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of reso, oh, Councilmember Holman?
Go for it. Go for the book.
All those in favor of resolution number five-three-zero-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Thank you to the community for being involved and caring enough to come out and to provide us with your recommendations and your voice. Thank you very much. We will now move to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on their significant city-related activities since the last regular council meeting. We will begin with Deputy Mayor Wells.
Well, I'm going to have to pass this evening, I've been on vacation for two weeks.
All right. Councilmember Pelosi.
I'm ready. I attended the Regional Policy Committee, King County Regional Policy Committee, and it's a, a committee where I was appointed by the Sound Cities Association. We, the, we only had one agenda item, and that was the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy. Current Veterans and Human Services Levy expires December 31 of this year. The funding allocation is 50 percent split, 50/50. A pro, a proposed amendment came out of King County Council, and it was also reviewed by the Regional Policy Committee Caucus last week. There will be a, there was recommended a new levy mix. Veterans would be one-third. And remember now, the current one is 50 percent right now. Seniors would get a third, and a half of that would go to senior veterans. So, if you did your math, the veterans would get 50 percent with that new proposal, and human services would get a third. There was many differences of opinion in our discussion. At the RPC meeting, Councilmember Von Reichbauer asked the King County Attorney to clarify the rules for going forward. There were five amendments introduced to this meeting. There were nineteen citizens that provided testimony. The bottom line was, the RPC voting members voted nine to three to, to support the King County Council proposal. So, King County action is to approve or disapprove the RPC position. It's in their hands right now. It's a 10 cents tax per 1,000 property assessed evaluation. The current is five cents, which expires in December. So, here's, here's the next steps. If, if King County Council changes in any way the proposal from, and the voting proposal from Regional Policy Committee, the counterproposal must come back to the Regional Policy Committee, because it's referred to as a mandatory referral. King County Council must pass legislation by one August to place a measure before the voters in November of this year. So, there's a, a big expedited, in fact, I think tonight they were supposed to, or today, they were supposed to be voting on it. So, I haven't heard. Has anyone else heard?
Have not heard yet.
Okay, okay. So, it's a very contentious levy at this point. So, anyway, that's my report.
Thank you. And Councilmember Pelosi, just for one clarification, the original ballot measure was for the five cents per thousand of assessed value, but over the course of time, because of the 1 percent property cap, 1 percent increase cap per year, the actual amount right now is 3.9 cents per thousand.
Okay.
Over the course of time, it's changed to 3.9.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because of the value.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember Troutman.
Well, I was gone for 10 days to North Carolina due to an emergency, but I came back just in time for our Fourth of July parade. Our Fourth of July event seems to be growing and being bigger and having more activities for the families and the children, and I'm really liking to see that our city to be a family, you know, being more family inclusive. And so, I don't have any of my committees until coming next week, so I'll have my report then.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Mayor. Instead of reporting on what's happened in the past, I'm going to report on what's going to happen later on this week. I'm a member of National League of Cities First Tier Suburbs Council, and we're bringing the First Tier Suburbs Council. This will be mayors and council members from all over the United States that are on, officers on this committee to, to Auburn this week. And City of Bellevue, Councilmember Conrad Lee, and City of Auburn, through some, my work and the work of the mayor, are going to be co-hosting this committee meeting. So, on Wednesday, the First Tier Suburbs are going to be meeting at the Network Dinner that we, most of us attend, if not all of us, of Sound Cities Association, where they will see what's been described as the best working regional association in the nation. A lot of the cities that are coming want to find out why our association works so well. You just heard my colleague, Councilmember Pelosi, speak to how well they're getting input and required to come back to us on these, these matters. So, they're coming in to basically ask how we, we work. Then on Thursday, we're coming here to Auburn, where we're going to be talking about digital parity with the Superintendent of Auburn Schools, Alan Spicati, and our own IT Director. and our own IT Director, Paul Haugen. And then we'll be talking about transit-oriented development with three of the larger Tier One developers in Washington State, or actually, West Coast United States, that build these types of facilities. Then we're moving over to Orion Industries, where we have targeted employees with developmental impediments to employment, where some 300 of our most vulnerable citizens are employed in living wage jobs. And we'll be talking to the CEO, John Tyson, over there, about bringing one of these into other communities in the nation. Then, all work and no play is, we're going to take a, a working tour, I assure you, a working tour, of the microbrewery, craft distillery, and cider brewing industry in the valley here. After which, we are going to tour the new digital incubator over in the Transit Plaza, and then we'll be meeting with the Sound Transit Executive on the transit portion of the transit-oriented development, and take a train ride into Seattle, where the bus will meet us and take us back to the hotel in Bellevue. The next part, Friday, we'll be in Bellevue, where we'll be talking about vision, and you've heard me speak on this before. Bellevue has had a vision of what they wanted to be for 60 years. And they've been true to that vision through administrations and councils, and they have achieved, by many standards, that vision they had for themselves. And so we're going to be listening as electeds from first-tier cities across the United States on how to achieve that sort of vision and make them happen in our own cities. So, that's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wagner.
On the 13th, I attended the Regional Transportation Policy Board, the region being the four counties of Kitsap, Snohomish, Pierce, and King Counties. They, we had an update from staff about their suggestions for new revenue sources for transportation. And they went through just about everything you could think of as potential sources, because they're trying to fill a 40 billion, that's a B billion-dollar gap, in what the cities and the counties think they need in the state, and what the current revenues will supply. So they came up with a number of different things, some that will have to be very controversial. One is a carbon tax on fuel. Another is a road usage tax. And so, you know, there's, there's lots of things to argue about in this, but I think it's, you know, we're in the billions, that's B. We have to get after something that can actually provide revenue. And the cities supposedly are going to benefit this time around. You know, when we got things like connecting Washington, most of the money went to the state, very little to the cities. This recommendation actually brings 16 billion to cities and counties. But 5 billion of that is, comes from a carbon tax, which we know has been a non-starter in Olympia so far. But quite few other states have done it, and so it may happen. Then the state talked about their facilities' action plan, which is how to keep all of the freeways essentially and interchanges moving. But they really are focused on I-5. And so I and others spoke to the fact that I-5 is not the only way to get north and south in this region. 167, 405 is an important one to think about, too. And I think the Department of Transportation heard that, and will do more facilities planning on those other routes.
Thank you, Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any committee reports set tonight, but I do want to share something that I think is going to be a little bit interesting for all. Typically on Friday mornings, myself and Councilmember Baggett, along with 200 gentlemen, are out at the beautiful Auburn Golf Course playing golf, or maybe we should restate that, we're hitting the ball around the course and trying to get in the hole as, as many shots as we can possibly get. And sent through only two of us on Friday. The starter at the Auburn Golf Course paired us up with a, another group, a father-and-son team. And as we were introducing ourselves and starting our round of golf, we found out that, well, I would say the, the father and son is not what you would imagine, a father and a son. The son was 54 years old, and the father was 84 years old. And we had a wonderful 18 holes of golf with a gentleman who, when he lived in Arizona, used to play golf four days a week, was a very good golfer, you could tell. And at the age of 84, he was knocking that ball around in some of those holes further than what we could even imagine hit the ball in some of our holes. So he was doing a great job. But the greatest thing was that the father, whose name is Ed, moved from Shoreline with his 84-year-old wife. They both have some physical issues in their, in their health. And Ed now lives at Merrill Gardens, which was fantastic. So we had a great conversation about Merrill Gardens and how well they like it, and then what's going on over there, and how much he's, him and his wife are happy to be in Auburn. So, the end of the day was a, a great day, knowing that, knowing we had a great time with these two gentlemen. And on a couple holes, Ed showed us up. We got even on a couple more holes. But to know that he now is a, a resident in Auburn, we hope to see at the golf course many more times.
Was he Italian?
He was not.
So you have something to strive for as you, as you get closer to 84?
As, as my handicap keeps going down, my age keeps going up.
Healthy Auburn.
Hopefully, they don't, they don't match in between.
They don't ever match in between, but that is something to aspire to. I want to, along with Councilmember Trout Manuel, share my appreciation for our Fourth of July festival, for all of the employees who worked for the city, who decided, or who were volunteered, or however they ended up there that day working to support our community and ensure that all of those who were there to celebrate and have a good time from our city and surrounding cities, thank you to each one of them for, for giving up a portion of their day to ensure that our days were, were very happy and very good and full of great food and safety at the park. And it was just tremendous day. Daryl isn't here to take credit for the weather for the day, so I say we take credit for the weather and let Daryl worry about that later on. On the 6th of July, I had so much fun. We went to Auburn Kinder Care to talk about community, and what does it mean to give back to your community. And that's an interesting conversation when you're talking with three-year-olds to 11-year-olds. Because how do you pick the words that are going to apply to each one of them? And we finally just gave up and let them come up, and we danced, and we hugged, and we sang, and we, they asked about safety for their pets, and they asked about how do we keep our community safe, or how do, how do I keep my home safe? And so we talked about things that they could do. But it was so much fun, there were about 30 of them. And I have to give it up to the ladies that were working at Kinder Care, because they have got to be exhausted at the end of the day, because there was a whole lot of energy in that room, and I didn't see it subsiding any time in the near future. And then the following day, we had some, about 20 students come in to visit us from China, one of our sister-city schools in China, Tankey, which is the sister school for Rainier Middle School. And they were here for 10 days to tour the City of Auburn, to visit with their schoolmates that they had been doing pen pals with, and to find out a little bit more about the culture of America. And it's always fun when they come in. We take pictures around the dais up here. They ask questions, I ask questions. They end, I, I, nothing compared to being out on the plaza there with police, because police bring all the cool stuff, right? They even, they even put handcuffs on one of the students this time. I don't know how I compete with anything like that. I've got no handcuffs. I gave them, I tried to tempt them with chocolate, that did work a little bit. But it's just always so much fun when the students come over, because it's part of our economic development. It's, you know, we have all of these students coming over. And in fact, there was another group last Thursday from Linping, and they are the sister school for Buena Vista, another 20 students. So they are here for a week, and this Friday, we have another group of students coming over. So it's, it's a busy summer for the people who are involved in our Sister Cities program, and I appreciate all that they do. We've had two parades recently, the Pacific Days Parade on Saturday, July 8th, and on Saturday, July 15th, was the Algonah Days Parade. And we are invited, as members of the Valley Regional Fire Authority Board of Governance, to attend in those parades. And they likewise will be invited to our August Fest Parade on August 12th. We get to ride the old Persh, uh, fire engine, it's always fun. And my thanks to the firefighters for giving up their time to be at that parade as well, and to drive us in that old, very cool fire truck. We had a memorial service, as, as I've mentioned previously, we lost former Councilmember Roger Thornderson about a month or so ago. And there was a memorial service for him on Friday. His family and friends gathered at Les Govee Park to honor his memory. It was a very nice turnout, seeing some friends who have been around for a while that we have not had a chance to spend any time with.
There will be a parade.
There will be a parade, that's right. So as, as the person who used to be in, in charge of the parade for Auburn Days, Auburn Good Old Days, Roger's report was always, "There will be a parade." And the following day, this past Saturday, the 15th, I attended another ceremony, another celebration of life, and that was for Dave Clark, who I mentioned passed away recently after a very short illness. The church was standing room only. And Dave, Dave Clark Architects has done work for municipalities throughout this region. And there were representatives from at least seven cities there to honor this man's legacy and his commitment to quality. And I hadn't realized this, but he wrote a book. And it was basically 11, or 100 rules to live by for young men to learn to live. And it, it, there were so many of them that were shared throughout the service. But the very first one, and it was appropriate to allow everyone in the, in the church to laugh, was, "Never buy her anything with a cord." So, never buy, it is, vacuum cleaners, irons, toasters, mixers. Never buy your beloved anything with a cord. Don't ever buy her anything that she needs. Always buy her something that she wants. So for those of you out in the audience, take note of that. And for those of you that may be listening, take note of that. But it was just, it was a fun way to, to remember that Dave Clark was full of life, full of laughter, and he will be dearly missed. One of his last projects was our council chambers. And so we are, are much better people for having known Dave, and our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any need for a close or an executive session this evening?
We do not, Your Honor.
All right, with that, we are adjourned, thank you.